You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here.
Reporting in progress.
Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Selectmen's rep Sly Karazinski.
Here.
And alternate Steve Malone.
Here.
Alternate Michael Scungeo. And alternate Brian Vertigill. They aren't here, so we have a full board, so we won't be seeing Steve tonight, but it's good that he came. Anyway. So tonight's agenda. We have the approval of the minutes from December 14th meeting. And under applications and public hearings, we have a planning board number 23-029. That's a boundary line adjustment between, that's Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Benjamin Steiner, Clyde Keane Jr., and Carol Cooper request a boundary line adjustment at properties located along Westport Village Road. Subject properties are currently shown at tax map 246 lot 73 and 74 in the residential district. Item B, planning board number 23-032, that's a site plan review modification. That's, I think it's Atlesh Patel requests a site plan review modification for his property located at 56 Menonoc Highway for plans to construct an approximately 640 square foot addition to the existing residential dwelling slash office for the Coach House motel business. Subject property is located in the business district and is shown at tax map 102 lot 15. And under other discussions, we have proposed 2024 amendments to the Swansea zoning ordinance. That's just one amendment we'll be talking about tonight. And any other business as may be required. So back to the top there. I'll see if we have any regional impact in any of the items on our agenda.
No, no, we do not.
Thank you. A motion by Michael York that nothing on tonight's agenda makes us notify any surrounding towns. Regional impact.
Seconded.
Seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we have approval of the minutes of December 14th, 2023. We have a motion for approval of those minutes. Okay, a motion by Richard, seconded by Jane. Is there any further discussion as to any changes or modifications during the minutes? And all those in favor indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that's a wrap. So now it's our first item, which is planning board number 23-029. That's the boundary line adjustment. Fieldstone Land Consultants, and I don't see them here tonight.
So I'm Benjamin.
A year, okay.
I'm going to put the application.
Okay, we'll pull it through. Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Benjamin Steiner, Clyde Keane Jr., and Carol Cooper request a boundary line adjustment at properties located along Westport Village Road. Subject properties are currently shown at tax map 246 lot 73 and 74 in the residential district. And I will open up the public hearing and let's see what we're doing here. Do we have a map of, do we have the?
Not in the package. Just pulling the package.
Yeah, we're missing the package there. Oh yeah, and you're representing, what is your name, please?
My name is Benjamin Steiner.
Benjamin Steiner, okay, you're one of the.
Thank you.
So, okay, what's your? So it looks like what they're doing is you're annexing some property from lot 31.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're doing? And it looks like in our drawing anyways, it's going to lot 33?
Yes.
So is that that 90 feet of frontage in front of there? How come we don't have a drawing for that?
I included three full-size prints with the application.
And you're adding with me tonight?
Could not find them before you left the office.
Okay, okay, we'll go by this right here. And just explain again, is that is, you're adding or not adding frontage? It looked like you were not adding frontage, right?
Not adding any frontage.
Would you just come up here and point this out, what we're doing here?
Sure. This is my lot here.
Okay.
So this pin in the front of staying, we've moved this pin over about 50 feet. So I'm adding about a tenth of an acre to my lot from.
Okay, so that did go on an angle like that, now it's coming over like this square.
So this shows current what it is. The pin is going to move over this way about 50 feet.
Okay, so currently, it's like that then.
These two lines are going to end up being almost parallel.
These two lines here?
Mm-hmm.
But right now your line is on a triangle, is that what it is? Is that what you're saying?
If I could probably.
Yep, you're right in.
We're going to make it go just like this.
Oh, oh, this is before, and that's after, okay, so this is what we're doing here. Everyone has that in the packet there. So right there, adding on this little bit right there, they're going about 50 feet that way. And this pin is remaining the same and just shooting right up to there.
Where's, what is 32, is that the new lot?
No, that's his lot, that's an existing lot that looks just like we see it in our packet. And it's going to have to the left of it, it's going to have about a 50 feet added on to that end there and come right down to that same pin in the front.
That doesn't show on mine.
That's what we're doing. Well, it doesn't show on mine either, he just drew it out there. We don't have the, they couldn't find the plans, we don't have the plans. This is what's going on here. And I'll confirm that before I sign the plans, anyway. You do? Okay, thank you. Everybody knows what we're doing here?
Yeah, I was curious, but no, we can't.
You know what we're doing? Okay, everyone, this is what we're doing there, that's adding on there.
So it's going to end up at like 100 and something feet on the back.
A little bit, yeah, a little bit back, yeah.
There's 90.
And it's going to join at the long day request.
They probably aren't. The request probably has a new lot numbers on it, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Because they just went through the GIS thing and changed all the lot numbers. So it's going to be confusing anybody researching that stuff during some more meetings, just because of that. So.
I get it. Do you want to pass this to Beverly, because it's, that's the new lot numbers, if that helps, sir?
These are the new law numbers, right there.
Just so you can visualize what's happening.
When I put the application in, all the lot numbers are correct.
Yeah, no.
Has that changed?
We're good, yeah, the lot numbers have all been changed in town because of the GIS survey. So it's just going to be a little confusing, but everyone knows what we're talking about. So are there any other questions on this? Or we close the public hearing? Anybody from the public on this one? Nope, then I'm going to close the public hearing. So, pretty much straightforward what he's doing, as he explained, adding some to the back of that lot, coming down to the same front pin. So. There are no objections, then.
This is coming out of 31. It's coming out of 31.
Yep, coming out of that lot right there, yeah.
And the frontage, the 90 feet, doesn't make any difference to us, because it's noncompliant to start with.
Right, it's not changing, it's not making it more noncompliant, it's just staying the same and the lot's getting a little bit bigger. So if nobody has any discussion about it, then a motion to accept the lot line adjustment?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Michael York to accept the lot line adjustment, seconded by Brandon Self. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is planning board number 23-032. That's a site plan review modification. This is Atlesh Patel requests a site plan review modification for his property located at 56 Menonoc Highway for plans to construct an approximately 640 square foot addition to the existing residential dwelling slash office for the Coach House motel business. Subject property is located in the business district and is shown at tax map 102 lot 15. So, let's just take a look at the application here for a second. We're doing here, which is a modification. We have any drawings for this one, do we have? No drawings here? Okay, other than the ones we have in our packet, we have some of the artifacts in the packet here.
I do have.
I don't know if anybody remembers, but we've been through this one before, it was on a 1212 there, and they just didn't do anything about it, so the back, because the time ran out. And from the packet you can see that they're actually using the deck space as their enclosed office, is what it's going to be.
Does it feel like they changed anything?
No, so.
No.
I will open up the public hearing because everything looks about the same. So, any, that would be you, correct, sir? Would you like to add anything to what we have in front of us here? Or what you're doing is you're creating an office space there?
Residential.
His wife's been diagnosed with fibromyalgia, and all the veterans are on the second floor. They're going to need a veteran on the first floor.
Okay, so that's just going to be, but it's still the residential personal use, it's not the rental use, okay.
Correct. The office is still the same, it's going to be open.
Okay.
It's not anything. My issue is just the first floor bedroom first.
I got you, thank you. Yeah, bedroom. And everything stays the same, really. Setbacks, doesn't affect the setbacks. Parking, still plenty of parking there.
Probably Mike.
Right, oh, Mike, yes.
They did, upon approval last time, they did file the building permit she did get, and they did put in the concrete piers, they did put in the concrete stuff.
Oh yeah, I remember that stuff that did go in there, but they put the piers in for this as well, you said?
They did put the piers in as well.
Okay, so they're doing the same thing, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. So, any questions for the applicant from the board? And any questions from the public? For the applicant or the board? No, then I will close the public. Did you have a question? No, okay, bye.
I have a point of order. Is this application already considered complete, or it was not necessary?
Um, yeah, we didn't have a motion for it to be considered complete, but there's not really an application to look at here. It's a modification for a site plan, but. So we skipped that part of it, thank you.
Okay.
And we just opened up the public hearing. If there are regular site plan approval, we have that back, because that's in our site plan, we used to do that. So again, if there's no other questions from the public, then I will close the public hearing. And the public hearing is closed. Any discussions on the board? Again, straightforward. Nobody's doing, it's already started to do it when he had his first approval, so.
Just to include the staff recommendation conditions in the approval.
Would you make that a motion?
Sure, I would make that.
Can I ask Mike one question?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Mike, do you have any, any concerns on any of this?
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion from Victoria.
I'll second.
To approve the application with the following conditions, which would be, shall obtain a billing permit and file approval from the code enforcement officer. And the addition shall only be used for persons used by motel management, and shall not be rented out as part of the motel operation. Now, let's see, lighting, correct. You know, lighting, yeah, required to be arranged so as not to cause color on the building properties or on adjacent public roadway. Those are the three recommendations which are fine, and I think we had two of those in our last one, anyway. So, seconded, did, did you second, oh, Brandon seconded, okay, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it's approved, we can continue. Now, under discussions and other business, we're going to be discussing, it's going to be a 12th amendment to the zoning. And it's there because we forgot to discuss and add into our regulations, not regulations, add into our proposals. But we did discuss it at other meetings about the density requirements for multifamily in the business district two. It was not in our zoning, it wasn't there, so we need to replace it, we need to have something that has, that says about the multifamily and what the density is. And when we discussed it, we had discussed having six, I think six was the maximum. And I think that was about it.
Yeah, that is our only change that we did to that.
I'm pretty sure it was, it was changing it to six and moving it under Village Business Two, because Village Business Two did not have a density designation. So, we can discuss it here, make any changes, whatever, or we'll have one more public hearing with that one amendment on it. And then that will be added on to the other ones that we voted to put on in Warren last week, yes.
I have a question, I'm not sure if it goes in this amendment or if it needs to separate. Limiting the height of apartments. Right now it's basically three stories. I'd like to see it reduced to two.
We do, well, we did a height for Village Business One with this last one here. This is a whole across the board one you're talking about, which is kind of late in the game, I think, to get into that one.
I'm not sure if it belongs here or.
It would belong next year, we're going to do something about it next year, but not in this year's amendments.
Unless you petition for it.
No, that's done, you can't do that anymore. I mean, the time has run out for petition. So that's too late. Victoria brought up the fact that this says the minimum number of units for a multifamily residential dwelling in the business district shall be three units. And she was questioning why we should have that.
Why a minimum?
It's a good point, because that's, multifamily starts at three units or more. I mean, that's considered multifamily, three units or more, so it's kind of odd to have it, that the minimum's three units.
So we're just sort of defining that that's what multifamily is, in a sense, with that sentence?
Well, it's already defined that that's what multifamily, we don't even need it in there, I don't think. Probably ought to cross it right out of there. We do have that, I think the minimum is five in the business district. Regular business district, but.
I just, what's the thinking, though? Why would we specify?
I'm not sure, not sure why that's in there, but I don't think we need the three in there, because again, it's kind of useless, because multifamily starts when it's three or more.
Okay.
And we're talking about six when it is connected to a public sewer.
Maybe to clarify to the general public, because they might say, well, two's multifamily, you know?
Yeah, well, they look in our zoning and they find out that two is not multifamily, it's a duplex. So they'll find out that three is multifamily, so.
This verbiage was pulled out of the ordinance, so in one districts, this is the case.
Repeat that, I didn't get it, the first part of your sentence.
The verbiage for this?
Yeah.
Was pulled out of the ordinance, straight out of the ordinance.
Was pulled out of, was pulled out of the business ordinance.
I couldn't tell you which district, but this was pulled out of the ordinance.
It's historically the dinner ordinance.
It's under regular business and it states five and not three. And this was not under Village Two, because Village Two never had one in it, and it wasn't out of Village One either. So it was out of the business district as far as I know, and that's a five. So, if you put five, it'd make more sense than three. Because three is.
Five, it's.
No.
Let's just take it out.
Let's just take it out, yeah. And then we'll just have a public hearing, just leave that out of there, because it is kind of confusing. Well, unless people say it's just, and I'm just saying, you know, it's just me, but anybody, anybody disagreements with that? What do I know?
How is it worded in 2020?
What do you mean?
Well, I'm looking at what it's citing here, and it's C, section five, article C1, or, excuse me, C.
You're in our zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes.
That should be like page 29?
33, that's why, unless it's.
Yeah, probably so, yeah, it starts on 29 for section five, it starts on 29.
Village Business Two.
Yeah, Village, okay, Village Two, okay.
Then going over to S, where it just says multifamily dwellings amended March 10th, 2020. And that, apparently, this is the verbiage that was amended and approved.
No, no, this isn't, no. That's just, that's just as a use, that's under uses for Village Two, and it wasn't an allowable use, uses permitted. And then it goes down A, B, C, D, and E, and it gets down to S, and S is multifamily, and that was a permitted use, but it wasn't laid out what the density was. It was never, never the density, it's density in all the rest of the zones, but not Village Two. So we needed to put a density in there, a limit as to how many can go in there. Otherwise, there's no limit. That's what this is doing for Village Two.
I thought the reason that that is in there, because we changed it from eight, what I believe was eight to six.
Oh, we changed it, well, we proposed to change it when we had the discussions this summer or late summer, when we discussed that part of it, because we never had a density for Village Two. So we decided to change that or put a density for Village Two and change it to six for Village Two. It's still, let's see, in business, let's go to business and find out where that is there. This is two, there, multifamily. And we have 12 units per acre for business, that's the density there. And I think in business, in Village One, in Village One, we had eight, right there. So. Yeah, so we were, we were talking about Village One, where this whole thing came about, and we removed multifamily from Village One. So, we're still allowing it in Village Two, so we decided to move that density part of it to Village Two, because it didn't have the density, and change that eight to six. And so that's what we're doing now.
Yeah, probably the point of confusion was when initially with Village Business District One, we proposed six per acre. And then later through our subsequent discussion, is when we took multifamily out altogether. So that's, I think, where the six actually came in. Now, it would sound like he was wanting to apply that to Village Business District Two.
We did later on, when we, may have been that same meeting, but while we discussed that, because again, we never had, we needed it, but we never had a density for Village Two. And you have to have a density in there, otherwise, you can go whatever you want to do. So somehow it was left out of Village Two.
Yeah.
And all this time. So we decided, since we're taking multifamily out of Village One, we'd move that density thing down to Village Two and use six rather than eight. Yes?
So my question from where I, from my chair is, it's all about density. So it doesn't matter if it's multifamily or three duplexes. So it's one, two, a building of six, or if it's three duplexes, it's all the same for the language word?
Uh, let's see.
So you use the word multifamily, which suggests it's only if they're attached. But what if they're three duplexes or six singles?
We go by units, so we aren't saying whether they're attached or not generally.
I want to just clarify that.
Yep, and let me just double check to see if that's in here, because that's what we generally go by, our units. And the paragraph that we're moving down, and move it again, business, we're using the one right there. And yeah, we're using, because we talked about, I'm reading from the one, page 30 in our, and this is the, this is the multifamily density from Village One, and this is one we're moving to Village Two. And I'll just read the whole thing. Multifamily dwellings, the density requirement for a multifamily dwelling shall be one acre for the first dwelling unit and one half acre for each additional dwelling unit, unless connected to a public sewer. The maximum density permitted for a multifamily dwelling connected to a public sewer shall be eight units, and we're changing it to six per acre. So that's how it'll read.
But it's still suggesting it's multifamily, which means they're attached.
It's, it says units, it says nothing about being attached.
You use the word multifamily, which means they're attached.
Oh, okay, you're saying the definition of multifamily is that they're attached?
Absolutely, I mean, if you're, it is, it is the definition. So you were right in the very beginning, I agree, code agrees as well, three or more, multifamily. Two, one and two are the same thing. So that's what I'm trying to ask her, Kane, if somebody comes in to me with an idea, and I say you got a minimum of five, does that mean they have to be attached? That's the multifamily, so if they have to be attached, or at least that's what the ordinance says, it's referring, it's referring to multifamily. It doesn't refer to dwelling units. So if it's dwelling units that you're speaking of, then I would suggest maybe considering use of the words dwelling units versus multifamily. Multifamily means three or more attached, to me.
In our entire ordinance, we use units as the unit, as how many can be in there, whether they're attached or not. So you're saying that maybe we ought to clarify that at some point.
When you read that, when you read that, the word multifamily keeps being used over and over again. For me, it's suggesting that the only option I have in this unit, in this, on this piece of land, is for, for a half multifamily. The reason this always comes up is this, it's about sprinklers, right? One and two family, no sprinklers, three or more sprinklers. So that's always the discussion point, of how do I make this thing more affordable? Well, I separate them, so I don't have to have sprinklers.
So the, in my opinion, the density would still apply whether they're attached or not, because we're talking about, again, it says the density requirement for a multifamily dwellings, dwelling shall be one acre for the first dwelling unit and one half acre for each additional dwelling unit. So that doesn't say that they have to be attached, but that does specify each dwelling unit. And I wouldn't say that means that a dwelling unit is like a three family, if a dwelling unit is a dwelling unit. So.
I, I'm perfectly happy with your interpretation of it, but for me, the one unit and then thereafter is just a, it's a, it's a, it's a math, not a bridge, it's a homonymity, I can put it together on one thing, because again, you said the word multifamily, and I just think that can be problematic. You and me right now, we agree? That's great, but we're probably not always going to be here.
Well.
I don't.
Maybe we ought to look at it, maybe we ought to look at it that we're giving them the option, they can either have them attached or not.
Which is totally, totally fine, too.
Yep.
Is to our firewall a separation, or is it, is the new code that has to be something more than that?
Well, you can get fire protection engineers, they'll still do not, like 32-unit jobs down there, they've got, they've got two different systems that they're using, which do include a firewall, so they're using sprinklers, it's just how much sprinklers.
What I'm wondering, asking is, you know, could you have a foot between buildings? And then they would say that they're separated.
I have to check code, I mean, I know between, like say, detached garage and house, three feet, I couldn't imagine it being any less than that, but. And after looking, so it is.
I think the dwelling units covers it on our end, but I understand what you're saying. I just don't know how we can fix it.
I don't know if we need to fix it, you know, it does seem to cover it on our end, and it looks like it boils down to whether they're separate or whether they're attached, is the fire part of it, safety part of it, and not really the planning part of it there.
Totally right.
Uh, yes.
It sounds like you're suggesting a definition of the words multifamily.
We already have that, and it's three units or more. That's a multifamily. It doesn't say attached or not, three units or more is multifamily.
Perhaps that should be clarified.
Perhaps not, you know?
Okay.
So, I have two comments. One is, if you have multiple units, wouldn't you then need more than a half acre? Like, doesn't the fact that you're putting more buildings on the slot?
When it comes to setbacks and things like that, I think is what you're getting to, isn't it? Will they fit or not, is what you're saying?
That's a whole different issue.
That's another thing, if they have the option to attach them or not, if they have the room to place them separately and they want to do that, they probably can. But if they don't have the room, then they got the option to attach them and still meet the setbacks, the way I would say it.
And then my next question, to keep everybody happy, would it be as simple as saying multifamily dwelling with a little parentheses, S parentheses, so you're implying that there could be more than one dwelling?
We do have that, we do have that in there, yeah.
So, so doesn't that kind of cover it? Like, you're implying that it might be one building?
No, that's what we're saying, I think, I think we're covered right now.
Yeah, I think my point is valid, and maybe it's just a simple sentence, let's say that, not some density of six, six units per acre.
That's what we've said?
Yeah.
So we aren't specifying whether they're attached or not.
But when you're multifamily in that same sentence, then that's where it gets where. I understand, I'm glad you guys are in agreement, but I understand this point you're making as well.
Yeah, yeah, we get my point.
It's just a point of clarity.
But, you know, we got to make Mike earn his money there, so. Make it difficult for him sometimes.
I just always like to see everything kind of work together. And a builder sees multifamily, and obviously that way, hopefully he sees and understands the means. But for you guys, if it's three dwellings on one property, it can't even be three, it's that.
And.
And that's just, I mean, that's just, that's code definition versus Swansea planning.
Well, they can always come in and get clarification from the planning board.
Yeah, you know, absolutely.
Planning board can always change it another year or something. So let's see, get back to what we're talking about there. Are we going to scratch the minimum off of there?
I think we should, it's just extra words.
I already did.
You already did, okay, okay, we scratched the minimum.
You want to scratch the, the last sentence.
The last sentence, it talks about the minimums on there, minimum per unit, and we're going to leave it at the six then, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay, so.
Okay, so the dwelling, the first dwelling on there can be six continuous apartments.
It could be if they are attached, yeah, that's what Mike was talking about.
But after that, you have to have, for any other building, you have to have an additional half acre to go with it. So if you separate the first building from the second one, where are we technically? Is that?
You talking about setbacks again, is that what? Is that what it's about?
Well, setbacks, or the minimum, lot size. Still residential units. So if you have a four-unit building and a two-unit building, that's all you can have on one acre.
Yeah, it's.
If you can fit.
The configuration is irrelevant, it's, it's to six per year. I mean, how they do them is irrelevant, as long as there ain't setbacks, and the heights within place two-two-one, four-four, I mean, four-two, I mean, it's six per year, that's, that's what, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, what he said. So, that sound like we can go to a public hearing with that twelfth amendment? Okay, because we have time for one more, and it should be on the, on the docket this year, so, so we can, we don't get into trouble with no density at all for Village Two.
Well, the next meeting, we're gonna be kinda tied up, aren't we? Possibly.
This is a small one. I mean, it looks small, but we did discuss it like for half an hour here, but, you know, it's, it's a small one, and I think we need to have it on there, definitely, a public hearing. Okay, so, we need a motion then, to put, a motion by Victoria to put amendment twelve as modified on for a public hearing at our next meeting, and I don't recall, I'll call what the date is, but.
On the eleventh.
On the eleventh, okay, on January eleventh. Do we have a motion for that? What, was that your motion?
Yes, that was my motion.
Somebody seconded that, nobody seconded it. Okay, Jane seconded that, okay, is there any further discussion? All of those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's a big enough. Any other business, as may be required? Anything else? Have we got it all?
Other business, Matt?
Yeah, other business.
Just something to think about. Meetings in November for this coming year, and December. December second meeting is the day after Christmas on the calendar.
Oh, is it?
Do we wanna do, do we wanna do, like, back-to-back both in November and December? So that we get them in, so we don't get piled up.
And back-to-back meaning what, exactly? Back-to-back?
Thursdays, back-to-back Thursdays.
Oh, okay, two, two weeks in a row?
Yes.
Like the second, or third, or whatever. Yeah, we probably oughta do something like that, for both of them. We have done that before. We, we can wait, we can keep it in mind, but we can wait until we get closer to those times, because sometimes there's not much on the agenda, and we don't have to do that. So, like, a meeting or two meetings before, we'll know what's gonna be on the agenda for that one, and the planning board can vote to have a meeting the very next week, or back-to-back, like you just said there.
Yeah, depending on what we had on the agenda, if we had something that had to be taken care of, but this looks empty, why haven't?
But if, if we do that.
We need, what, three weeks lead time for them to post or to submit an application?
Yeah.
To come up on the meeting.
We'll know that, that, that's what I'm saying, we'll know like three weeks, if it is three weeks, sometimes it's more than that, because in advance, what's coming up on the agenda.
We'd known like September, October, if.
What's coming up, and then we could schedule the meeting to whatever works out for everyone, whether it's the very next week, or the very last day, or whatever, or a different day, actually, we could do it on a different day if we wanted to. So, if we do that, let's see, we can either not schedule a meeting for Thanksgiving Day, which we probably never do anyway, and not schedule a meeting for that one in December and wait and see, or, I think we oughta go ahead and schedule a meeting for December, leave the Thanksgiving one alone, because we never do that one, schedule the December one, and then if it looks like we're getting something, we can just change it when we know what's coming on the agenda, because we may just cancel that meeting, if there's nothing coming up, I think anyways, anybody else? So that's for our schedules we're talking about, for the scheduling for next November and next December. So we could schedule the December meeting and not schedule the one for November, and if something's coming up, we'll know about it in October, and we can schedule a meeting for that.
Do you want me to change the calendar, or do you want to just wait and see?
Oh, you have calendars there? We'll just cross them out, we'll just write them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's this, this guy, right?
Yeah, no, I don't have one, I don't think. I'll just get one for me, and I didn't, well, this is the packet that I got from your office, it probably wasn't in, I stopped by your office, I know, Monday or something like that. Thank you. Okay, we'll use that.
Stefan, what's on the change for eleven, do you know yet?
Yeah, um, there is a multi-tenant for a, like, a, a multi-tenant for a dog training facility. And.
Maybe base scale row, maybe?
Possibly. Hopefully. I think that's about it, I would say.
We have an opportunity for February twenty-ninth meeting, if you want.
Yeah, there we are, right there. Any other business? Anybody can think of? If not, motion for adjournment would be in order.
We'll move.
Motion by Michael York to adjourn, is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned.